Moving on, as Departmental Economic Development Strategic Plan.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I’m Tulley Clifford, and I’m joined tonight by Roger Dale with the Nadelson-Dale Group, who are basically our consulting firm, who put together our Economic Development Strategic Plan. We’ll go through that tonight, and we’d be happy to answer any questions when we get to the end of our presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I’m pleased to be here tonight to make our final presentation for a process that we’ve worked together on for over a year now, and I think is a good milestone for the city. I’d like to review where we are in the Economic Development Strategic Plan, the process we’ve gone through, and what the next steps will be as the city begins to implement the recommendations. Wanted to start by thanking all of you, first of all, members of the council, who have interacted with us throughout this process, and it’s been very helpful, and I think has definitely influenced the way this document has been shaped and put together. So, thank you for that input throughout. Also, the staff has been excellent to work with, starting with Dave Norman, who initially contacted us about the opportunity to work on this project. Tom Fox, before he retired, was really instrumental in keeping the process moving along, put a lot of his effort and his institutional knowledge into the plan. I think you’ll see that reflected there as well, as well as his assistant Kathy Tally. Joe Vaca and John Fraser also were key participants in the process and giving us the information that helped to give this a unique, community-based perspective. And then I also want to thank Tulley Clifford, who’s come in fairly late in the process, but is already really up to speed on where the plan is heading. And I think, as we get to the end of my presentation this evening, he’ll step in and talk about the city’s expected next steps, and I’m confident that he’s on board with that, and will do a great job in that area as well. So, tonight, I’d like to just review the planning process. I know we’ve been through this before, but there may be some members of the community here who are new to the process, like to review that for everyone’s benefit. And then primarily give you a summary of the recommendations and next steps. So stepping back and looking at the big picture, really, the reason the community does an economic development strategy is to foster high-quality economic growth. And we know that opportunities to grow in terms of new development are presented to cities often, but the question becomes not just a matter of quantity, but quality. And this is really a time in your development as a community where you’re looking at maximizing the quality of the growth and directing it in a way that is consistent with your community’s And in that regard, the process itself has been very intense in terms of community and stakeholder input. We started about a year ago with a community-wide workshop, and from that went to a community online survey that got general direction on what members of the community at large are thinking about economic development and the future direction of the city. Then, I would say, the core of our stakeholder input process was the Economic Development Summit Meetings. There were three meetings spaced over several months where we had 50 or more stakeholders attend at each meeting to give us their perspectives from primarily the business community and the development community, as well as other community-based organizations, on what the opportunities are for future industry growth and development in Camarillo, and what some of the challenges might be to make that more feasible, and things that the city can do to, again, encourage quality and not just quantity of growth. The consultant team also did several background studies to kind of validate the ideas that came out of the community workshops, looking at demand for new real estate development in terms of commercial and industrial development, based on the demographics, both now and as we expect them to change in the coming years, as well as an analysis of potential industries that might be viable to target for growth. And I think we’ve actually had more than two study sessions, but we had, as you well know, several study sessions with the council, and that was really helpful to us to make sure that we were delivering a plan, that there’s a comfort level for you as the decision-makers to pursue the recommendations. So, the plan is really a mix of all of those sources of input, the stakeholders, as well as our own team’s experience in doing these types of strategies around California and other places in the United States, and our familiarity with the best practices for economic development. And then, of course, the direct input from the city council and the staff, which is important because it’s largely going to be on the plate of the staff through direction and support from the council to implement this. So, a plan that is, has the buy-in of the staff and the council, in our experience, is much more implementable and action-oriented than one where that input has not been sought out. I’m going to repeat a few things that we’ve talked about in earlier meetings, but I think they’re a great starting point, especially for those who may be with us tonight for the first time, that really highlights why the opportunities we think are exceptional here in Camarillo, and why a strong economic development program is a sound investment, and you can expect a good return on investment of resources in Camarillo. You do have a very vibrant and diverse local economy, ranging from industries like tourism and destination retail, the outlet centers and so forth, the downtown area. Of course, agricultural historically has been a strong and continues to be a strong component of the economy, a very strong and interesting manufacturing sector, including biotech and some other technology-oriented activities, IT or information technology, professional services, and some distribution facilities and wholesale trade. As we all know, the amount of land that’s remaining for in Camarillo is somewhat limited, and that has consequences and implications for how we approach economic development. I think it’s important to think, but to realize, though, that dramatic changes in the physical appearance of the community are unlikely at this point. Land use changes are, the patterns are pretty well set in many cases. And so, we’re not at a stage in your development where I would expect the character of the community to change dramatically based on new development. It’s really more of a fine-tuning stage than it is a reinvention stage. We’ve also found that there is a very strong core of stakeholders that are interested in the quality of economic development, and I think they are also sensitive to the fact that the land capacity here is finite, and I think many would say that’s a good thing because the community has established a very high quality of life, good image, and that is not likely to dramatically change based on some new development, on the areas where new development could be accommodated. One thing that came out of our stakeholder meetings that was especially exciting to us is that there is a high level of interest in entrepreneurial development, kind of a tech startup community here, which we really learned about through this process. And I’ve said this before to you, but it’s something you can really be proud of and excited about. There are many communities where we’ve worked that talk about this and would like to know how they can get that, and you’ve already got that starting here. So, that’s something that I think I would really encourage you to nurture and work with in the coming years. It’s also interesting that there are a concentration of civic organizations that serve the larger Ventura County region that are based in Camarillo. I think that’s also great for your image and provides part of the social infrastructure that makes economic development programs successful, and some important and unique institutional assets that are either in the city or near the city. The Cal State Channel Islands campus, the port, the airport, the naval base are all things that have special opportunities attached to them for industry and economic development. There’s also several projects that are underway, or probably by now nearing completion, that are important, and again, good anchors for economic development. The improvements to Highway 101, which have been a long time coming, but I think are going to be a significant step in the right direction in terms of infrastructure, the hotels that are under development, and the convention facilities. That really raises the bar in terms of the types of visitors and business-type visitors that can, we can expect to attract to the city. The opening of the Matter Labs Think Tank and Startup Studio, again, good, strong indication of that interest in entrepreneurial development. And similarly, the Maker Space at the airport, all great assets for building new business So, from that background of what we think the strengths and opportunities are, we developed a series of recommendations and put together the document. It’s organized in terms of a summary of the background technical studies we did, highlights of the community input, a recommended action plan, and that’s prioritized. And Tulley, in particular, we’re talking about some of the first steps or next steps in the process. And then we’ve also identified through our stakeholder outreach a number of partners in the community, organizations, and other government agencies that can be partners in implementing the plan. Most of those are not new to you. They’re organizations you already work with, but just reinforced in the plan where their roles might be important in future economic development programs. There’s basically seven areas of action items: marketing, existing business retention and expansion, entrepreneurial development, real estate and community development, workforce development, some infrastructure recommendations. This is not a comprehensive capital improvement plan, but we just want to complement that with some areas that we think are especially important from improving the capacity for business and economic development. And then also some recommendations that deal with quality of life, which, especially in a high-quality community like Camarillo, is really an important foundation for economic and business development. There are a total of 25 recommended action items. Some of them are things that are really just continuations of existing programs, others are new, and among the newer ones, we’ve kind of prioritized them in terms of things that would happen sooner and things that would be lower priorities and implemented later as additional resources might become available. So, I’m going to fairly quickly go down the list of strategies and just indicate if it’s a 1, a 2, or a 3. 1 means that it’s the first priority, it’s something that would require new resources. It’s either a new program or an existing program that would be ramped up considerably. Status, number 2 is a status quo, which is basically an existing program that, for now, would continue at existing resource levels. And then 3 is a new program that would require additional resources, but we’re recommending that that come later after you’ve got some initial headway from the earlier actions. So, the first area, as I mentioned, is marketing and outreach. And here, the first priority is actually taking that to the next level and taking our recommendations and putting them in the form of an actual marketing plan. And I know that the city already does marketing as part of its economic development efforts, but I think it’s a good time to revisit that and comprehensively look at the strategy for marketing based on the new opportunities that we’ve identified for the types of businesses that you might be successful in attracting. The marketing outreach program also includes some ideas for place-making. These are things that are already underway or kind of reflected in existing policies in the city, and we’re not, at this point, recommending new resources, but just referencing that here is something that does have an economic development benefit. The next area, and this is something that I think city staff, as we started this process, was aware that it’s a very important role the city already does, but that the resources are limited, and the ability to reach out to as many businesses who might be helped by your programs is constrained by existing resources. So, we have recommended some specific areas where business retention and outreach could be expanded with new resources, and these are all high-level priorities in our recommendations. Expanded business outreach program, the concept of a business advocate, sometimes called an ombudsman, but that term maybe is a little bit out of date, but the concept of someone at City Hall that is helping business applicants and development applicants to get through the process, of course, maintaining all the existing city standards, but make sure that that process is friendly to the types of businesses that you’re trying to attract. And including that, a get-to-yes team, and again, this is something that I understand the city already does, but to perhaps devote more resources to that, and advertise it more is something that is really part of the way the city does business. Third area is entrepreneurial development. We’ve got some recommendations about making Camarillo a startup-friendly city, and partly that’s, again, a matter of kind of messaging, getting that word out that you are open for that type of business and encouraging it. There are some existing incubator and accelerator programs in the community. We’re not recommending that the city directly fund or participate in those, but that you would coordinate with those and, again, include them as part of your marketing resources. Something that would come later is, and this is common in many communities, that entrepreneurs don’t have as much access to startup capital as they would like, and that’s something that we’re not really recommending as an initial priority, simply because it’s generally beyond the role of a city, especially a city of this size, to get directly into funding new business startups. But there could be an opportunity to coordinate with and, again, help to market existing non-city organizations that are in that business. Leveraging private startup resources, leveraging institutions and industries, these are things that are really already part of your way of doing business, and we’re recommending that those stay. And then positioning the city as a place for innovation, and this could have some land use and infrastructure implications, but again, it’s also very important, just as part of a marketing message, that the world knows, and frankly, I, before starting this process, wasn’t aware of the extent to which Camarillo is already a strong area for technology-oriented development, and that message really can be put out more strongly. Next area is real estate and community development. Coordination of priority areas and sites, this is something the city already does. In fact, part of this process, the Community Development Department gave us an excellent map of existing sites that are available for development for different types and projects that are underway. So, the city is very much on top of where there are opportunities and where new development might go that would accommodate new business growth that would continue. Some areas that could be new priorities would be development streamlining. We’ve recommended a follow-up study or audit to look at ways that the entitlement and permitting process could be streamlined further. Our impression from talking to the business community is Camarillo already is well above average and does a good job in that, but just want to kind of keep that message going forward, and so that’s the recommendation there. And it’s really beyond the scope of what we do as a firm to go in and do that type of an audit, so there are specialists that do that, and this might be a good time to visit that type of a process. Marketing, the hotel conference centers is, again, that’s already underway. That’s a great opportunity, that would be a high priority. Retail repositioning, this is something that most communities are now facing as the retail industry around the world is changing, and we don’t have specific immediate recommendations, but it’s just something the city has to continually monitor and kind of anticipate that there may be changes that need to be addressed in older shopping centers in the coming years, and be positioned to think about other land uses that might be appropriate on those sites. Same thing for business park capacity, that might be a good alternative use of shopping centers that may become, or less viable in the future. A business park might be a good alternative use. And housing diversification is always a difficult topic in Southern California because of our basically high housing prices. There are a number of programs within the city and the surrounding region that are addressing affordable housing, probably under-resourced, but this is not something that we’re recommending the city get directly involved in as part of its economic development program, but to continue to be aware of those and see where it might, there might be opportunities to expand housing development that could accommodate workforce housing. Next area is workforce development. Again, these are things that are very important, but not necessarily directly within the role of the city in this case. You’re kind of coordinating with school districts and workforce development organizations, and I think you do a good job of that already, and we’re recommending we kind of keep that status quo level of effort from the city’s end. Infrastructure, again, this is not intended to be an overall capital improvement plan. You’ve got another process for that, but the Highway 101 improvements, you’re already doing, that’s a high priority. Other city infrastructure, again, is part of your normal capital improvement plan process. We would just recommend that that be coordinated with economic development, so that if issues come up in the future where there are specific types of infrastructure that are important for projects or programs the city’s pursuing, that those be prioritized. Non-city infrastructure would include, for example, broadband, and again, I think this is an area, especially if you’re pursuing technology startups, that you’ll need to keep on the, keep this on the radar screen, but it’s not necessarily a direct city action because it’s often non-city providers. Quality of life, these are things that we would consider important as amenities for making the area attractive for economic development, community gathering places. That’s, again, something that would happen later, but something to keep on the radar screen. Other quality of life initiatives that we’ve kind of outlined in a general way in the report. The one thing that we’ve talked about is, as a status quo, is the signature events, and we know you’ve got a good list of events that are popular and successful in the city. Keep those up to date, I guess is our recommendation. Make sure that they’re in sync with the types of demographic that your community is attracting, and that they stay in sync with that, I guess would be the recommendation. And as of now, I think they’re excellent. So, at this point, I’m going to turn the presentation over to Tulley, and he’ll talk more about the specific things the city anticipates doing as we move towards implementation.
Yeah, as you can tell, the plan is quite extensive, and we can’t do it all immediately. And so, what we’ve taken a look at is what should we do first, and more or less, to what level should we do it? And really, what we really need to do is just remind everybody out there initially that Camarillo is a great place to live and do business, and we want to get that message out there. We want to work with all these various groups and make that happen. And then, as we’re going along, we also want to identify what additional budget do we need in this area? What resources do we need to really get that word out there and to continue doing that? But in keeping with this, perhaps I should have put this slide first, is we really need to know from an economic development perspective, how are we going to measure what it is that we’re doing? How are we going to measure our performance? How do we know if we’re doing a good job or a bad job? How does the public know? How do the businesses know? How do potential new businesses know? And as part of that, we also want to develop a communication plan so that we can do some outreach, but so that people can also reach us and let us know what concerns they have and what changes they would like to see. So, we have to determine what’s the best way to do that? What type of a medium should we use to undertake that type of an activity? And then, of course, one of the places where we want to see, where we will see some of our biggest gains is just enhancing our existing business environment. And that’s when we’re looking at our processes that we have in place. How do we make them better? How can we expedite approvals? How do we expand and retain our business? How do we make that happen? We may not initially need to bring in somebody to do an audit. We may just want to sit around first with four, six, eight people who’ve gone through our processes and ask them, what went well? What needs improvement? Have a look at that before we go to an actual audit. We can do that fairly quickly and inexpensively as well, but at the same time, we want to continue to outreach to businesses who are operating and say, how you doing? And find out, is there anything we can do to help you along? What kind of messaging can we assist you with? Talk to them about mentoring other businesses. What tends to happen in cities that have positive economic growth? The businesses help one another. So, even when you’re competing with somebody, you tend to help one another so that everybody succeeds. We want to really encourage that. We also, of course, want to encourage the startups. We do want the new businesses. We really have a group here with a lot of, several groups here with a lot of energy in this regard, and they want to get going. And they want to start collaborating with some of the existing businesses that are here, with the universities, the colleges, with the nonprofits. They want to work in the incubators, in the accelerators, they want to work in the spaces, and they want to work with the government agencies to make them succeed. They want to see the whole climate here be one of collaboration and cooperation, and I think we, as a city, can assist in that role very strongly. And one way of doing that is making sure that the data and the information out there is available. Do people know what’s available to buy, rent, lease? Do they know what potential opportunities? Do they know what our business environment is actually like? Do they know who they can talk to? Do they know who the support organizations? Do they know where the accountants are? Do they know where the lawyers are? We need to help them find that information, develop the network. The city may not physically host that, somebody else may, but we have to be able to guide people to that, and as a first step, that’s something we should be doing. And then, of course, we want to make sure that our infrastructure is appropriate, and so we’re talking about having the places, we’re talking about having the quality of life, that it’s not just talk, that we actually are doing it, that we know where the heartbeat of the city is and that we’re supporting it, and that we’re looking at the supplemental needs, whether it’s housing, whether it’s transit, whether it’s broadband, whatever it happens to be, that we work and make that happen. We can do a good analysis to see what we need, and I think that’s a really good place to be starting. And with that, you’ll notice in the report, there’s a whole bunch of words written as what’s recommended, but actually, what we’re asking to do is to adopt the Economic Development Strategic Plan. If you do that, we will then publish it, we’ll finalize it, publish it, and we’ll undertake these initial activities. We’ll come back on a quarterly basis, and we’ll give you the report card, let you know how it’s going, what’s going well, what needs improvement, and what would you like to see changed. And I think this is an activity that will continue to evolve, continue to grow, as will our businesses and our economy. And with that, we’re happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Questions? Mr. Kildee.
Is there anything in this report that you found that surprised you, and is there anything that you can think of in this report that basically wasn’t addressed vis-à-vis the economic patterns that are happening along, across the state and across our nation? I know, and I ask you that because I know you’ve done a lot of these, and it’s just be interested if there’s something that you saw in here that somewhat, I don’t want to say you get surprised in this business, but somewhat surprised you. And is there anything that, you know, that you didn’t find in here that you thought you would?
Well, the question about the surprise, I think I mentioned already. I have worked a lot in Ventura County for about 25 years. I don’t think we’ve worked too much in the city of Camarillo, though, so I’ve driven through Camarillo many, many times, and I had no idea, to be honest, we had this much manufacturing and technology-oriented industry here. That was a surprise, and it’s a very good surprise. So, that’s definitely reflected, and I guess the message in that is that there are probably many other people who don’t know that. That’s a tremendous asset that you can do more to market if you choose to go in that direction. In terms of other trends, I don’t believe we have overlooked anything that would be on the standard checklist of what you should be talking about for an economic development plan. This is, we’ve taken a pretty comprehensive approach, as you can see, by pulling in topics as wide as housing and quality of life and real estate development, things that are all in our mind, part of economic development, but in some communities, the focus in economic development basically begins and ends with marketing. And we agree that marketing is basically a very important economic development activity, but it’s not as effective if it’s not backed by the substance in the community, the quality of life, the high-quality infrastructure and workforce and other foundational issues. So, we’ve, I believe, addressed all those. One area that I mentioned that I think you’ll want to keep your eye on is changes in the retail market. This is a concern to many communities, but especially communities like yours, which have developed a great retail tax base through your outlet centers. Fortunately, outlet centers, at this point, have been less impacted by the types of things we see going on in the retail industry compared to, for example, regional shopping centers, so, like a shopping mall, and many communities are struggling. But it’s something you definitely need to keep your eye on constantly and begin to think about, what is the next generation of, going to look like of shopping centers or other types of land uses that would... types of land uses that would potentially replace them as that market evolves.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
You don't just comment, I think that...
Well, we haven't...
Well, we'll do a comment in a minute. Go ahead, no questions.
Okay, we have one member of the public who'd like to speak to us, and now...